I'd like to call the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting for June 12, 2002 to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor Josh Geer from Lakeside Baptist Church to lead us in prayer, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand if you could please. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the gift of another day. Thank you for providing for our needs in ways that we could not provide for ourselves, and for blessing us in ways beyond what we could have possibly imagined. Lord, you are so good to us. Things do not always go as we might would have preferred, but we know that through it all, just as Romans 8:28 promises, you work all things for the good of those who love and honor you. Lord, help us all to love you better, and to love each other better, as you command us to do. And then help us to notice the many ways that you do bless us, and not to take those blessings or your goodness to us for granted. Lord, we thank you especially for the city of Muskegon. Thank you for permitting us to live in a city that we can be proud of. Help us to love our city well, and to do whatever you would have us to do to make this a better place to live, for us and for our children. Thank you for raising up leaders who care about our city, and who are willing to do the work necessary to protect and improve our way of life here in Muskegon. Please give them wisdom now as they seek to make decisions which honor you. Thank you for hearing our prayers this evening, and we ask all of these things in the name of our only true Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Spatow?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Thank you. First order of business tonight is the recognition of the Spring 2012 Citizens Academy graduates. Chief Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor. I have a resolution here for the recognition of the Spring 2012 Citizen Academy graduates. I'll read this to them, verbatim. Whereas the city commission desires to provide citizens with a better understanding of the functions of law enforcement, dispelling misconceptions, and increasing positive communication between citizens and the police. Whereas, it is the desire of this Muskegon City Commission to encourage cooperation between the public and law enforcement to possibly impact our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby congratulates and recognizes the following participants. Crystal Bayard, if you're here, please stand up. Gregory Bergman. Cabrina Conklin. David Kaiser. Eric Knoff. Casey Orson. Craig Pelleri. Ian Barcosa. David Cielander. Carl Stimmack. Bradley Tripp. David Wilson. This is for the faithful attendance and completion of graduations from the ten-week Spring 2012 Citizen Police Academy. On behalf of the city commission, I thank you, and appreciate your participating, and I hope in the near future that all these graduates can put the word out, in the fall of 2012, we're going to run another Citizen Police Academy, and it's everything and more of what I just included on this resolution. And I'd like to give you a hand for participating. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, and if you see your classmates, tell them congratulations on behalf of the city commission, and thank you for taking time to take an interest in city public safety. And Denny Powers, thank you. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes of the May 22 city commission meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Environmental program mowing and trash cleanup contract planning and economic development. Summary request: The contract for mowing of lots and trash cleanup of public and private properties previously held by Freelance Enterprises Incorporated had expired on March 31, 2012. A request for bids was advertised, and four companies placed bids. Freelance Enterprises of Muskegon Township is the low bidder for a three-year agreement. Staff recommendation: To approve a three-year contract with Freelance Enterprises Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreements for the mowing of lots and trash removal on properties located within the city. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of Sherman Boulevard from Lincoln to Estes. Engineering. Summary request: Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of Sherman Boulevard from Lincoln to Estes, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation: Approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Approval of contractor for new construction of house at 605 Jackson, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the contract with DeRose Builders Incorporated, 7786 Wiser Drive, Whitehall, for the new construction of a house located at 605 Jackson for the cost of $117,446. The property was purchased with neighborhood stabilization funds from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and home funds from HUD will be used for the construction. After the new construction is completed, the home will be marketed to sell to an eligible home buyer with an annual income less than 80 percent of the area median income. The city received six bids. Staff recommendation: Approval for the Community and Neighborhood Services office to prepare an agreement with DeRose Builders and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Liquor license request from Top Spin Incorporated, 2536 Henry Street. City clerk. Summary request: The liquor control commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Top Spin Incorporated of 2536 Henry Street to transfer ownership of Escrow 2011 Class C STM licensed business with Sunday sales permit, dance entertainment permit, outdoor service, and specific purpose permit from Team Red Dawn LLC. Staff recommendation: All departments are recommending approval. Fireworks display permit for Muskegon Country Club. City clerk. Summary request: Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 4, 2012, at the Muskegon Country Club, 2801 Lake Shore Drive. Fire marshal Metcalf will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation: Approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance. Polling site relocation. City clerk. Summary request: Building closures, redistricting, and ADA compliance have forced the city to move polling locations. Staff proposes to move the following: Blutton School closure to Great Lakes Naval Museum; McLaughlin School closure to City Hall; Hackley Administration Building ADA compliance to City Hall; Nelson School redistricting to Department of Public Works. Staff recommendation: To approve the polling locations changes as outlined above. Committee recommendations: The election commission approved the changes as stated at their June 7 meeting. Approval of title company for Community and Neighborhood Services. Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve Lighthouse Title Incorporated to be used by the city of Muskegon for the title work and closing agency for the CNS housing program. Staff recommendation: To approve Lighthouse Title Incorporated for Community and Neighborhood Services title agency needs.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor Galvin?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spatow?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, item A, please.
2012-2013 budget, finance. Summary request: The city commission may take action to adopt the 2012-2013 budget with whatever changes or adjustments it deems necessary. City ordinance requires the budget be adopted by the second regular city commission meeting in June. Staff recommendation: Receive public comments. Upon closing the public hearing, the city commission may decide to adopt the budget.
Thank you. Commissioners, we talked at length last night, a presentation from city staff. Do you have any follow-up questions to that before we begin the public hearing? Commissioner Spatow?
Just one comment. Based on that discussion, there seems to be general consensus on everything but one item, so I would suggest unless something comes out of the public hearing tonight that alters that, that we should adopt the budget and then the item, the senior transit item ought to be handled as a separate issue under a separate, that way we have a budget done, and we can still put the energy into focusing on coming up with a resolution on this particular item, instead of trying to hold the whole budget up before we come to a resolution. I think we had some good ideas yesterday, and perhaps we'll hear a few more today. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to, are you suggesting that we, there's plenty of folks here that want to do the senior transit?
Right, and I want to hear what they have to say. What I'm suggesting is, is that we split that issue off as a separate item from the rest of the budget, because that seems to be the only point of concern in the community that I'm hearing, anyway.
Well, it is, but it's still part of the budget, so I think we're going to have to hear it during the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, this is time for the public hearing, so I know that there's some folks here that signed. I'm going to call on you first, however, if there are other folks, because this is a public hearing, that didn't fill out one of these forms, well, you also have an opportunity to speak. And bear with me as I try to read handwriting, because my eyes are getting poor, and I haven't gone to the optometrist in a few years. Joshua Eldon Brady, I believe?
Yes.
Joshua, I need you and all the others to please step up to the podium up here, and I need for you to give your name and your address, please.
My name is Joshua Eldon Brady. My address is 1336 Spring Street. I just wanted to speak in support of the senior transit program. I think it is a somewhat unique and is an outstanding program in our community, and I would like to ask if, number one, that you support keeping it in the budget, number two, if you don't, that you follow Mr. Mayor Wilmington's, I believe, suggestion from last night of giving us a chance to vote on a millage option to fund it. We need it. There's a lot of people that support it. If you can't put it in the budget, give us the option, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rolles, am I pronouncing that right? R-O-L-E-S is what I, Rolles? Rolles? Okay, I always try to butcher them, and I'm doing pretty good here.
My name is Margaret Rolles. I live at 1350 West Hackley Avenue in the Village of Park Terrace Apartments. As soon as I heard that the transportation system was going to be canceled, I panicked, so I got busy, and I called all the buses and all, any sort of transportation I could find. First, a taxi would cost me $60 round trip, if I were to take that. The Red Cross is limited to low income. I'm not. The go-bus, you have to notify them two weeks in advance. When you have doctor appointments, you don't always have two weeks to plan. The city bus, many people can't walk to the bus stops, nor can they wait for 15 or 20 minutes standing, maybe in the weather. The city transit system should raise the cost, the price of the transportation. A dollar and a half won't even buy a quarter of a tank of gas, so what do we expect them to do? They can't stay in business unless we raise the rate, and I would say all of us would gladly pay considerably more. Thank you.
Ms. Rolles, do you have any idea what you'd be willing to pay?
I'm sorry?
Basically, would you have an idea as to what you would be willing to pay per trip?
Yes, the people at the Village of Park Terrace, three-fourths of us, said five, no lower than five, four or five dollars. A dollar and a half is just a drop in the bucket.
We understand that. Is that four or five dollars, so like if you were going to the grocery store, it would be five dollars to the grocery store and five dollars back?
No, no.
Round trip.
Round trip.
Round trip, okay.
Another thing with the go-bus, you have to pay the two dollars each way. You can't just do a round trip. Where with senior transit, you can just give them the round trip price and make one payment due. That it?
Thank you.
So, the round trip price is three dollars?
Yes, yes, and that, that won't even buy a gallon of gas, much less. And another point, the senior transit comes right to your door, and the fellows are so helpful that we've really become attached to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
Just as a point of information, I know that the Red Cross is medical, and there's an income requirement, but at age 85 and over, and I've heard from many people who are older than that, it's completely free. It's a free service.
Well, I'm 93, and I did not qualify.
You don't have to qualify, if I'm saying that right. 85 and over is pre.
Oh, well, when I called-
No qualifications needed. Is that correct?
When I called, they didn't tell me that.
That's something I just found out.
85 and over?
85 and over is pre.
But that would-
No income.
But that doesn't compare to the service from senior transit.
Well, the Red Cross guys are pretty good.
We're attached to senior transit. Okay?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Dorothy Davich. I also live at the Village of Park Terrace, and I do not use the senior transportation, but so many of my friends do. They depend on it for doctors, go to the hospital for blood work, dentist appointments, and it's so nice, they pick them right up under the portico and take them and bring them back. And I can't really say much more than Margaret, but it is sorely needed by all the seniors, I think. So, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Roger Nye. I live at 1495 Westwood Circle in Norton Shores. I feel impelled to speak on this topic tonight because of my own mother. Basically, we have to remember that when people get to a certain age, it's not just a matter of convenience for them to have safe escorted transit available to them. It can also be a matter of life and death. My mother had a fall after a lighting from a common carrier. She fell and broke her hip in two places. Within a month and a half, she had died of the complications, even though the operation on her hip had been successful. So, this is a matter of life and death. It's not just a matter of convenience, and especially when we consider the winter months here with the snow, piles of snow, sidewalks that are not cleared. I think this is a very important service, and we've got to always remember that. Thank you.
Mr. Nye? Mr. Nye? Mr. Nye? Have you attended a Norton Shore City Council meeting and suggested that they provide the same service for seniors in Norton Shores?
No, I definitely intend to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olachek?
Marianne Olachek, 690 Southern Avenue, and I'm also speaking for Nelson Community Association.
Could you explain who the Nelson Community Association is, please, sir?
Pardon?
I need for you, if you could pick the mic up so that we could hear you a little bit, raise it up closer. Thank you. And then if you could explain to me who the Nelson Community Association is.
Well, one of the neighborhood associations.
Oh, Nelson Neighborhood Association?
We broke off from Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association years ago.
Thank you.
I think we started in 1983.
Thank you.
We have quite a few seniors in our programs, and again, I guess we got a little more confused here about how these funds are being allocated here. I'd like to ask Mr. Mazari again. I see that when you originally applied for this money, you asked for $911,000 for the original, that's the-
Which is the CDBG?
Activities program.
$911,000?
That's the original amount that was listed on here.
This public hearing is on the city's budget. I think maybe you're talking about the-
This is CDBG Projects Activities 2011-2012 activities, and this is apparently what you sent in originally.
And requested. We held, and that could very well be right, we held that public hearing in May, I believe it was in May.
That budget was adopted in May, and that's separate and apart from what-
This is the same one. This is the same one. Looks like the same thing, the same items on there.
Well-
The same amounts, except for certain, certain things. I noticed in that original one, you asked for $123,000 for public services. Is that your recreation programs, your senior transit and the CBOs? And then in the current one over here, I see they got the recreation program in there. You got the CBO grant, you got $78,000. I guess, is that what you were telling me about, that you, you got cut back 60?
I think you're talking about the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Right, 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 right.
What we're, what we're having the public hearing on tonight is the city's budget, which does not include the Community Development Block Grant budget, and as the mayor indicated earlier, that budget was approved back in May. What we're having is something entirely different.
We're discussing here to find out why, how was this reallocated? I guess I noticed that you took out the senior transit from the original program, and then you told us last time when I was here that you applied for $45,000, I believe, and they cut it, or did they cut it down to 20?
Mr. Olachek, I think $45,000 was what was in the budget last year for senior transit that came from the Community Development Block Grant Funds. There's a citizens group along with administration that makes recommendations to the city commission for that particular budget, and that public hearing was held in May. And part of that, within that budget, there were not any funds that were allocated to the senior transit system, as well as other not-for-profit entities lost their funding that they've had over the years, based on the fact that the federal government has continued to not give as many funds back to communities, so we've had to make some cuts.
Well, what's this in here? This is your narrative that you sent in. CDBG Projects and Activities 2011-2012 activities. That's, is that the one where that's the last year?
I'd have to see what you're looking at, but if it had-
All right, so they didn't, for this particular year, you didn't include the transit program at all?
Any funds from the Community Development Block Grant Funds were not included in budget for senior transit, sure that is correct.
Okay, well, I didn't understand what he told me the last time, that they cut back 40 percent on.
Well, perhaps there's some confusion, if I may. The 40 percent cut, I mean, I'll be ripped out here. Elections have consequences. We all vote, and when we choose to vote for people who say they're going to cut our taxes and shrink government, that means there's less revenue, and government gets shrunk. And what's happened is the current Congress reduced the budget of community block grant funds that they sent out to the various cities around the country by 40 percent. So, the things that we were able to fund two or three years ago, there's that much less money to fund this year, and as a consequence, there's just not the money in that budget. So, that's what you're seeing in that piece of paper. The money that we got is 40 percent less than what we were getting a few years ago. That source of funding is what was paying for this budget, and just like we've had to make other painful cuts, because we no longer have the kind of revenue sharing dollars that we used to receive, and our community development block grant monies have been cut and cut and cut. That means the programs they supported ultimately end up without enough money to pay for them, and that's why we're all in this situation facing cutting a very, very good, well-used program that everybody thinks highly of. I mean, that's the consequence. With the community grant budget discussion, that public hearing, and those decisions were made, what, two months ago? So, now we're on to the general city budget.
Well, how much, how much did you actually get then for public services, where you got $78,000 listed here that you were asking? Is that with the cuts or without the cuts, or what?
Well, I don't have that budget directly in front of me at this point in time, but the point that I think-
He's the one that gave me the information.
Well, I don't think I gave you that information. What I, I think I indicated, and I can say it again, is that the city received $823,000 in CDBG funds.
Twenty-seven.
For total CDBG funds.
That's, that's the CDBG Projects part, and you got another one?
That's all of the CDBG.
That includes that home, home projects one, too?
That doesn't include home. That's separate. Home and CDBG.
You're 246, where you asked for over a million dollars, and you got $800,000?
We, we can ask for whatever we want, but we get allocated an amount of money each year.
I know, I'm trying to find out, how much did you get allocated?
$823,000 in CDBG funds.
That's the whole thing?
That's the CDBG funds.
All right. Well, anyway, we had discussions about this. I guess it's, it's like these ladies here, my people, saying about the same thing. I was listening to your dialogue here yesterday, and gee, I don't know, I guess somehow there's not a, there's a disconnect here between the city hall and the people, the public. I guess I don't, I don't understand it. You must think, you're talking about five-dollar fares each way, you're talking about reducing the service to three days a week. I guess everyone's telling me, well, what happens if you have a service Monday, Wednesday, Friday? What happens if you have an appointment on Tuesday and Thursday? What are you supposed to do?
Change it.
So, and then five dollars is just too much for a lot of these people. And my neighbor, I'm on Nelson Neighborhood, I'm in them there, too. Maybe three out of four of the families in there are on some kind of a government check coming, and that's, that's the situation. And they just can't afford to put that kind of money into it. They have a hard time even thinking about the go-bus, and the go-bus doesn't really work for them, because many of them can't even get on it. And they can't afford a regular taxi service. This has been one of the good programs you've done, and- This has been one of the good programs you've done in this city. I mean, you've done some dumb things here, I know. But this is one good one you've done. I don't know why you want to give it up. You've got to do something here to get that thing going. You're going to have a hard time going back to the voters in this particular climate that you have. Everyone wants to cut taxes, that's all you hear about, is cutting taxes and cutting taxes. And if you expect people to come in there and just hand over another tenth of a mil even, they're going to start questioning you. I know, and someone mentioned something, you have to raise your ceiling on your caps, or your cap on your millage rates, or whatever that is. If you ask for a one mil, people are going to wonder, well, you're only spending a tenth of a mil, where are you going to do the rest of that money? You've got to make sure you get that thing right when you present it to the public. As far as our association is concerned, if it comes right down to it, we'll be glad to help you how we can. We can circulate petitions and help out in that way. But if it isn't written up well, if it isn't presented well, it ain't going to fly anyway. I'm just pointing it out to you as a unbiased person over here. And I don't know, I guess you're going to have to, you're going to have to find some way to get this thing together. I don't know, this is not my province here to dictate budgets to you. But considering what, if you have a rainy day fund of about $4 million, I don't know, it seems to me you ought to be able to find somebody in there somewhere to take care of this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Thanks to everybody for being here, including you. I get all excited when I see people standing up for the rights. Anyway, I want to start by apologizing. Last time we were together for the city commission meeting, I was all emotional, and I apologize for that. It was wrong. It's an explanation, not a justification, but it's an explanation. I just come back from Chicago, standing up for the rights.
Thank you for the apology. We're here to talk about the...
Okay, you got it. Now, I was here last night, and I was listening to the commissioners discuss possible solutions to this seeming dilemma. But I said, and I agree still, that the solutions that were proposed seem to be a little bit off the mark, because I think that your definition of the problem is a little bit off the mark. First of all, I heard a lot of, you know, turning this thing into a joke, which always bothers me, when I hear people yuck, yuck, yuck about something so serious, it really bothers me. You know, I heard people use the word term Cadillac, this is a Cadillac service that we provide our elders here, to the door pickup and stuff like that. I'm wondering, in the middle of overtime, what is some old gal going to do? You know? And even though I don't use the service either, I don't even have a mom anymore who might, it bothers me when I go to the pharmacist and somebody's mom can't afford a prescription drugs, my heart goes out. This is not just a luxury service, like other people have said, it's a life and death thing. No, there was a mention last night, and this man goes said something about, oh, there's only 281 people. You know, they're all doing this thing right now. And my comment was, if there's only two people, two somebody's moms who can't get what they need, in the richest country in the world, in the city of Muskegon, where I see golf courses, and I see, you know, other people, you know, entertaining themselves, in the richest country in the world, if somebody's mom can't get to the doctor or can't get to the store because we don't pay for it, there's something wrong. Now, I heard some talk last night about what's fair, Norton Shores doesn't do this. Well, Norton Shores does have, after all, the Meyer Market 30 acres, which we do not have in Muskegon. And if we have to go down and get some groceries, we have a long way to go. Anyway, rather than worrying about what's fair and putting us on the ballot now, we were shifting the blame earlier, saying, well, we, you know, have elected state and federal government officials who aren't sympathetic. Well, rather than trying to blame them, we're trying to blame all the voters in Muskegon. If we put it in the ballot, which fails because it's worded wrong or because they didn't turn up the vote. Rather than trying to find somebody to blame, let's think about what is right, not what's, you know, fair or who's to blame, but what is the right thing to do here? If somebody's mom can't get what she needs, that ain't right. And we need to find a way to make sure that she can. Now, we need to come up with creative solutions. I know my friends have a number of creative solutions, and I can start listing them off. This one right here, she's got an envelope of solutions. And my comment last night and again tonight is, rather than you spending your time, which you're overworked already, trying to create creative solutions to this problem, please consult the community, they have the solutions. We just need to implement them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address this item?
Yes, I will.
Please...
I'm Kay Winja.
Please step up to the mic. Thank you.
Yes, I am Kay Winja, and I'm from the Village Park Terrace. And I want you to know that I would like to thank all of you for all of your past service that you have provided for us. I have used it many times. And I want you to know that it has not been money wasted. There's drivers that are so polite, and they put two people in the car if they're going in the same direction. It's, I mean, they try to cut back. They're doing the best they can, and I know you people are, because you have a budget to follow also. But please remember, you may be pushing some seniors on the road driving that shouldn't be there. Keep in mind of that also. But anyway, I'd like to thank you, because it's an excellent service, and it's badly needed. We have people in their 70s, 80s, and 90s where I live, and I never realized how important this was, till I moved there and had to use it myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Mark Evans, 1899 Barnes Road. I am the director of senior transportation at the American Red Cross. As a commissioner...
Could you move the mic a little closer? I'm sure people are having a little trouble.
I'm sorry. Well, and I do understand the difficulties of keeping a transportation program funded. It's not an easy proposition. The funding is not really out there to get. You really have to work at keeping those cars on the road. It is a very difficult proposition. Even if you get the cars, you have to maintain the funding for the insurance and the gas and the maintenance of those vehicles. So I do understand the difficulties you're having here. We do provide, as the commissioner said, service to people who are over 85 free. Our service is a free service, we do take donations. Our service is getting pretty full. Since this announcement, our ridership of city of Muskegon residents increased by 50%. We do not have a lot of space in our cars. Our current funding levels do not allow us to get more vehicles right now, as much as we'd like to do that. Even if we could get the money to purchase it, we'd have to keep it on the road. We are looking at trying to find funding, and as the commissioners know, that's not an easy proposition. I will let you know that we do only provide medical transportation. We do not take to stores or the library or any place like that, unfortunately, because once again, our cars are pretty much filled up. In the middle of the day, there is no room. We have about 40% of our riders are dialysis patients, so we have a lot of folks who really, you know, it is a life and death ride for them. So what I can tell you is, we have some space at American Red Cross, early mornings, late afternoons. We'd love to give you a ride, if you need one, to a medical facility. It may be difficult to get the appointment to match up with your appointments, but we will do our best for those of you who don't have any other transportation, because we do think that all seniors should be able to get where they need to go in the county of Muskegon, because you deserve to get those rides.
So you don't, in other words, if you're not 85, you can't?
You can still ride if you are over 60 and are low income, up to 150% of poverty.
What do you consider low income?
The federal regulations for low income, and I have that number here.
Mark, maybe you can discuss that with her afterward.
I can discuss that with you later.
Or set up a meeting to go out there, so we can continue with this.
So I just wanted to let you folks know about our service, and that we do have a little bit of space, but, you know, you don't, I mean, we just don't have a lot, and we're only medical appointments. But best of luck to all you folks, and, you know, you have, you know, the Red Cross is there to help you if we can.
Are you facing budget constraints?
Yes, we fund ourselves with donations, with grants, you know, we get money from United Way, but, you know, you always got to put new proposals in every year, you have to get approved, you have to get the money. And as you know, all funding sources are being cut. I mean, federal, there's not as much money as there used to be wherever you go. You know, we used to get money from the Muskegon, from the CDBG funds. And obviously, they don't have it, because they can't even support their own cars right now. Well, I'm not saying that in a negative way, I'm just saying that's a fact. And all, you know, all federal monies are down, and, you know, I'm struggling to keep my cars on the road right now. But, you know, we're going to do everything we can to keep those on the road, and, you know, as I say, we'll do our best to try and pick up some of the slack here, but, you know, we just, we're pretty cramped, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Please step forward.
I'll get to you.
I'm Phyllis Holbert. I'm Phyllis. I've called every single one of you. And I called the senator, too. I've called every single one of you, and I appreciate for you for listening to me. I didn't want to get up here because I have trouble with this, but we need help. And we can't, we've paid our dues, we pay our taxes, and we vote. And I think, and we've got, we are all spouses of World War II veterans. We're trying to make it on our own, and we can't drive anymore. You don't want us out on that road. And someday, your parents or your grandparents, I'm going to be 90 years old in July 16th. Someday, your parents or your grandparents are going to be in the same situation, and if you're still working in, and they have to go to the dentist two or three times a month, or the eye doctor, or the foot doctor, or have blood work done, or have cancer, they're going to have to call on you, because they can't get there. They can't get to their appointments. We can't, sure, we live in a wonderful apartment in a wonderful city, and you know what they're saying now, love Muskegon. We do, we've paid our dues. Why can't you help us? You can take away, you know, you have that graffiti, you have a fun to take care of, clean up graffiti. Why can't you put kids that are in trouble, somebody that hasn't committed murder or something, is in jail or something, that could go out and clean up, why do you have to spend our money on cleaning up graffiti and silly stuff like that? Why can't you give us the money to help us? We pay, we don't mean to pay $5 each way. We mean we would pay $5 a round trip to go to where we have to go. I've taken that place, I've taken that car three times last week. Three times last week. I can't get there any other way. And I can't take Red Cross, I'm going to be 90, but you can't, you don't know if you're going to be sick and have to make an appointment two weeks ahead of time. So please, help us if you can. Mr. Mazzate, I was your old neighbor. Your kids were my paper boys. I used to take their mittens when they leave them on my porch, and I'd put them in the dryer and call you up, and you'd come and get them. God bless you all, and thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Jenny?
I suppose our city manager is squirming at this point. I brought my friend Cisco Kidd along.
My name is Robert Jennings, and I still live at 3553 Marina View Point, which used to be a short walk to CJ's. The building is still there, but of course, the building, the business is...
Would you keep on with the budget? Is this about the budget, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, are we just doing budget?
Yeah, this is the budget only, we'll get...
Oh, okay, well, I'm out of order. Will I have a chance to?
Yes, you will.
Oh, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would care to address the budget public hearing?
My name is Gail Funk, and I also live at the Village at the Park at 1350 West Hackley. I just want to make a couple of comments on the gentleman that got up and talked about the Red Cross. I know what he speaks, because I've drove for Red Cross for about two and a half years, taking people to dialysis machines from all over the Muskegon County. But now I'm getting to that age where I'm thinking of not driving, because, well, I don't mind dying, but I don't want to cause somebody else's death, so. So anyway, but I got to find some way to get around, so that's all I've got to say. But I want to thank you for letting us be here and to speak our minds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner German, to close the public hearing. Any discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringell?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you. Before I make the motion, I just want to preface, I think we ought to split this particular item from the main budget, since this seems to be the main area of concern. I think it's important that we have a budget in place going forward for the next year. So that's why I'm going to make a motion to adopt the budget as presented, knowing that we will come back in a couple of minutes and address this other item. So I would move that we adopt the budget as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gollan, to approve the 2012-2013 budget as presented. Is there any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringell?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquest?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Spataro.
Thank you. I would move that we direct staff to come back to us, hopefully, is the 26th too soon?
Depends on what you ask.
Well, last night, for those of you who weren't here, we discussed a number of items, including temporary funding to get us through the end of the year, and placing an item on the budget, on the ballot this November for one-tenth of a mil that would cover this program going forward. We know that this is an amenity that Muskegon offers that no one else in the county provides, but we realize how valuable it is. And, I mean, I appreciate you all being here, but you're telling us what we already know, that this is a very valuable service for the people who use it, and none of us wants to cut it. The reality is, there's just not the money. So we have to get creative in figuring out, how do we keep things going, like we have with youth programming and some of the other things that we've had to cut over the last few years? So I would move that we direct staff on the 26th to provide a proposed ballot item and funding to carry us through to the end of the year, so we can put that ballot item on the November ballot for one-tenth of a mil.
Second.
Is that clear enough?
Well, I think we need to give direction as far as the budget. Are we looking to continue to do, because we discussed, so the folks know, we discussed items last night that said maybe cutting the service to three days a week instead of five days a week, and I know that could cause issues, but if it was for a doctor's appointment, hopefully, your physician's office or dentist's office would understand that you would have to have an appointment on either Monday, Wednesday, or Friday in order to get there. Or are we looking at doing it in five days?
My thought, they're covered through the end of this month.
Correct.
So on the 26th, I would assume that proposal would include, you know, raising the fee. We've already heard there's a willingness to look at that. Days of operation, and then we looked at, you know, some other items in there, but those were two big issues. And I would assume that that proposal would be based on the memo that was circulated, based on the discussion last night, showing costs and what it would take to get through the end of the year. So people are covered through the end of June, and if we take action in the second meeting of June, we should hopefully have a way to carry this forward for the remainder of 2014.
we've already heard there's a willingness to look at that, days of operation, and then we looked at, you know, some other items in there, but those were two big issues. And I would assume that that proposal would be based on the memo that was circulated, based on the discussion last night, showing costs and what it would take to get through the end of the year. So, people are covered through the end of June, and if we take action in the second meeting of June, we should hopefully have a way to carry this forward for the remainder of 2012.
Was there support on that?
I second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to direct staff to bring a proposal, hopefully by June, the June 26 meeting, in regards to maintaining the senior transit system budget for at least the first, apparently, the first six months of fiscal year 2012-2013, and with ballot proposal language, to bring before the citizens of the city of Muskegon the opportunity to vote to fund this as a regularly operated program. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I would suggest to any citizens that are out there that are creative enough to come up with other ways to help finance this program, or the American Red Cross program, or other programs that help seniors as far as transportation, would begin to work on those type of items to assist any of the transit systems throughout the county. Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Proposed Betton Development Agreement Changes Promissory Note With B.R.A., City Manager. Summary Request: The city's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, B.R.A., is obligated to reimburse Betton Automotive Group for eligible costs incurred in the redevelopment of their Henry Street projected project plus 6.5% interest. Total reimbursable cost plus interest to date amount to $1,681,590. Under terms of the original development agreement, these costs would be paid by the B.R.A. over several years as tax increment revenue was, were collected. Interest would continue to accrue on the unpaid balance. As described more fully, this proposal is for the city to loan the B.R.A. $1.66 million to pay off Betton now. The benefits are as follows. Benefit to B.R.A.: Reduced interest cost from 6.5% to 3.25% payable to city instead of developer. Benefit to city: Rate of return higher than can be achieved on investments like CDs or U.S. Treasuries. Benefit to developer: Cash received upfront to help facilitate further development of Henry Street Corridor. Also benefits the city and B.R.A. The city would be repaid over 13 years or sooner at a rate of 3.25% from B.R.A. tax increment proceeds. Staff recommendation: Approval of proposed development agreement changes and execution of the related promissory note between the city and the B.R.A. Committee recommendation: The B.R.A. met on May 29 and approved the proposed development agreement changes and promissory note.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the proposed development agreement changes for the Betton development, and execute the related promissory note between the city and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Any support? Second?
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Hood, to approve the proposed Betton Development Agreement Changes and Promissory Note with the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Is there any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Engineering Services Agreement For Williams Street Storm Outlet Engineering. Summary Request: Authorize staff to enter into an engineering services agreement with police and vandbrink engineering out of Muskegon to perform an emergency survey, design, and permitting project to replace, repair, a 54-inch storm sewer outlet at the northerly end of Williams Street, just north of White Street, for an estimated cost of $9,800. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to enter into an agreement with police and vandbrink engineering. This recommendation was arrived at due to the urgency of the current condition of the storm sewer outlet and complexity of the project.
Thank you. Nobody wants to make, thank you, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we authorize staff to enter into an agreement with F&amp;B Engineering.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to approve the engineering service agreement for the Williams Street Storm Outlet with police and vandbrink engineering. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
Fireworks Display Permit For Community Fourth of July Celebration. City Clerk. Summary Request: Fruitport Lions Charities Group is requesting approval of fireworks display permit for July 4 at Heritage Landing. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks. Staff recommendation: Approval contingent on all requirements being met. We also request that the late fees for the fireworks permit and special event be waived.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the fireworks display permit for the community on the Fourth of July, with approval contingent on all requirements being met, and also allow for the late fees and fireworks permit and special event fees to be waived.
Second?
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner German, to approve the fireworks display permit for the, by the Fruitport Lions Charities Group, and to its contingent on all requirements being met, and that the late fees and fireworks permit and special fee be waived. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Spataro?
Just one, I think he's still, yeah, there he is. I just wanted to point out that County Commissioner Bob Skolnick has been instrumental in filling this void that would have taken place in our summer, and I just wanna thank him for his leadership on that issue, and I'm sure he might be able to tell the community how they could help contribute to make the best fireworks possible, if you have that, that tech information?
Yeah, sure.
And also, Mr. Johnson from the Fruitport Lions Charities, we appreciate you stepping up to assist also.
Thank you, Commissioner Spataro. You know, I just, when it appeared that the fireworks were not gonna happen, I have been a member of the Pyrotechnics Guild ever since it was here in 1997. I joined a year later, I've been to four national conventions, and I just like fireworks.
That's why you're a county commissioner?
That's why I'm a county commissioner. Although, I will say, your meeting tonight was exceptionally exciting compared to most of ours. I, when I saw it wasn't gonna happen, it struck me that nobody was stepping up, and, you know, I've gotten myself in trouble before by doing that, and I have to say that I put it up on Facebook, it all happened through social media, and at this point, I've raised a little less than $13,000. The community foundation has agreed to match up to $10,000, so there's $23,000 available for fireworks. When we met with the fire marshal, who, I have to tell you, was terrific. We met with the display operator on Monday. I did give him the go-ahead to spend up, I gave him a budget, because the money that I've got will have to go for other insurance, and there's a lot of other things. I also want to, a couple of things. One is, the money all came primarily from individuals who just stepped up, not necessarily from Muskegon, but from all around the county. And the thing that really kind of got me excited about it was, I had just plain people, not rich people, people that are just, you know, normal people, that gave me like a thou, they called me up or sent me an email saying, you know, "I'll give you $1,000 to make that happen." And more than one, a number of them, did. $500, $1,000, and the money just came in from people who wanted fireworks in Muskegon County. Today, we were talking about seating, should those people get some special seats? You know what? I've decided, nobody's getting anything special. There's no VIP anything, this is for the community. I didn't promise anybody anything. I'm putting my own money, I mean, I'm no more than anybody else, but nobody's gonna get special seating because they paid money. So, this is just gonna be as good as it's gonna be. I have to warn you, probably not gonna be as good as the summer celebrations, they spent $40,000 on fireworks, we're not gonna get there. But, the fact that everybody stepped up, no money from the, you know, we're gonna pay for police, we're not asking you to do anything for free, we, I understand, and it's gonna be a great thing. I also wanna say one more thing. When I was sort of running out of hope, because originally, I tried to raise $20,000, and I only had a short time to do it, I got a message from Mike Johnson, who has run the Fruitport Old Fashion Days for 20 or 25 years, I'm not sure, he's a member of the Fruitport Lions. And he said, and I've known him for a long time, he said, "Call me." So I did. And he said, "The Fruitport Lions put on two nights of fireworks for significantly less," you know, it was like $8,000. Now, that's a smaller venue. So, he's, Fruitport Lions has become the partner in this, and are signing the contracts, thank God. Because I, although I'm planning on nothing happening, we all know that stuff happens. And I, you know, I'm too old to lose everything, so the Fruitport Lions can recoup it if they have to. But, anyway, we're gonna have fireworks on the Fourth of July, there's gonna be a rain day, I'm hoping it's gonna be Friday or Saturday, it'll be one of those two days, so if it's a torrential downpour. Mike has, without Mike, it wouldn't happen either, and...
Well, the Lions, in general, are here to serve. And when a friend of mine called me and said that they weren't gonna have fireworks on the Fourth of July, and Bob stepped up and says, "Hey, we wanna do something," I mean, when you look at the whole picture here, this is our birthday, everybody's birthday. And if we can't have fireworks on the Fourth of July, there's something wrong with us. And, like I said, the Lions stepped to the plate, my board of directors backed me after I made a verbal commitment on the phone, and I think we're gonna have a good show. I think we'll surprise you on what $20,000 will do. Everybody's impressed with what we do in Fruitport for eight, so I definitely am, you know, and Lions are here to serve, that's all I can say, and we're proud to be part of this as far as this goes, so thank you.
Mike.
Thank you, Mike. And Mike has done a lot of things for the city of Muskegon, and I also want to acknowledge the Fruitport Lions, because this is an organization that has stepped forward and is raising money for the families that were part of that tragic motorcycle accident that happened over in Wisconsin a couple of weeks ago. And they've brought their, I'm assuming this, but brought their board together to make it possible for people to make donations, so that these families can take care of their medical bills, for those that have needed to travel back and forth to Wisconsin to be with family members, they've done that. So, on behalf of the community, would you please relate to your board that we really appreciate the extra effort that the Fruitport Lions has given this community in the last year?
One thing I will mention, we are a bona fide 501(c)(3), so if anybody would like to donate to either one of these events, be it the fireworks, or the MMG motorcycle donations, if you make your checks out payable to Fruitport Lions charities, they are totally tax deductible, and that's one of the reasons why we went to the plate on the MMGs. So, I will get a, you can go to fruitportlions.com and get our address, as far as that goes, but any checks you make out to us are 100% tax deductible. Thank you.
Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please. I can call it, can't I?
Accept the resignation of Mayor Wilmington.
I ain't doing it.
We're not gonna accept it.
I can make a motion, can't I?
Sure.
Well, he's just gonna run a meeting.
Commissioner Spataro?
Well, with deep regret and lots of reluctance, I would move that we accept the resignation from Mayor Steve Wilmington, effective June 30, 2012.
Vice Mayor Gowron? Second? Thank you. Welcome.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Gowron, to accept the resignation of Mayor Wilmington, effective June 30. Discussion, Commissioner Spataro?
Yeah, I just wanna take a couple of moments to say that it's been a pleasure serving with you. I think you have provided better leadership for this community than a lot of people realize. I know you've taken away from your family and your business to put the city first, and that hasn't always been appreciated, but I have appreciated it. You have operated with integrity, and I know some people still have some issues that they blame at you, but they're wrong. It wasn't anything that you were involved with. You've always put the city first, and I've respected that. You've helped guide this commission to be more respectful toward each other, to be better teammates, and to put the city first and not individual agendas. And I just think that after a decade, you deserve whatever you plan on doing, and hopefully it's fun and relaxing, and you enjoy your family, and hopefully, you stay involved in city events and projects and services, because your talents will be sorely missed, and thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll be saving my comments to the, to the last meeting, but I would just let everybody know here, because I know not all of you, well, you may show up for June 26, depending on what we're gonna do forward. It certainly has been a pleasure, but more than that, it's been an honor to serve the people of city of Muskegon, so, thank you.
Roll call, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Spataro?
Just say it.
Commissioner German?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waringo?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you vote?
I'm gonna abstain. I think everybody knows my vote. Thank you. Any other business commissioners? Is there anyone that would care to address the commission? Mr. Jennings?
Okay, I, Robert Jennings, still at 3553 Marina View Point, us in Lakeside area, Harbor Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, I appreciate the privilege of appearing before you again. I was here in the May 22 meeting. Mayor Wilmington, I just wanna say, I don't know you well, and I'm a Johnny come lately, but I read so many good things about you in the Chronicle, and I know that your leadership will be sorely missed, and I wish you luck in all the great things I'm sure that will be on the horizon for you in your retirement. But thank you so much for serving Muskegon.
Thank you.
Okay, friends and fellow residents of Muskegon, thanks for coming tonight, it's good to see so many of you here. This is democracy in action, so I want you to know that I'm glad you're here. Again, I was here on May 22, and I spoke about a lot of stuff, I did a little bit of rambling, but I spoke on a couple of important issues. One was a business that was located on the ovals, no longer there, it's called CJ's, it was a little pub right on the beach. I spoke in defense and tried to save that, tried to impress the commission with how important small business is, especially that one in our community, and I failed. I also spoke on the unanimous voting for no-bids contract for allied waste and picking up our refuse. I didn't get an answer to that, but I requested then, from the city manager, to contact me with some answers in terms of, should be in your notes, if not, it'll be on film. I say that because you look somewhat surprised, but I did wanna know about the polling process and why on a no bid, no bid, right, folks? Of why that was approved unanimously, on the basis of the community being overwhelmingly supportive, okay? I never got, even though you have my phone number and... I never got, even though you have my phone number and address, I didn't get an answer from you, okay? Okay, so governing on empty or beating a dead horse, if you want to look at it that way, it's a closed issue, but look at Sagatuck, South Haven, Douglas, work your way up the coast, Holland, South Haven, I'm sorry, Grant Haven, Skip, Muskegon, go up, Pentwater, Manci, Empire, Traverse, Leddington, so on. They're all doing very well. There's one city, however, that is not, and that's Benton Harbor. Would you go home tonight or tomorrow morning, whenever you had a minute, and Google Benton Harbor to see the demise of that community? The, it's a coastal community that once had a lot of great, great assets. Whirlpool had its international headquarters there.
Still those.
You wouldn't want to live there today. No one would. Only ones who live there today have to because they can't find the other place. There are no housing values and much less else. Now, Muskegon is on that road, folks. If you say, "Oh, couldn't happen here," again, Google Benton Harbor and you'll see they're well on the road. Every other day, I walk the beach area, it's where I live, and I pick up refuse along the way, bottled cans, discarded soil diapers and whatnot. An absolute vodka bottle today. Now, someone's got some bucks out there. I bring that up because that area is so important to us, you know? We have world-class beach and people come here. They don't have to pay, they don't have to pay to park or anything else. They can no longer eat at CJ's, of course, again, beating a dead horse because that's a dead issue. I hope we've learned a lesson there. Mayor, may I approach the bench here with what I will call Exhibit 8?
Yeah.
It's a little piece from the Chamber of Commerce. You don't have to read it now, commissioners, but I've highlighted an area that I would like to have you glance at there. And again, I hope that CJ's will serve as a lesson because the federal government spends upwards, over $2 billion a year, $2 billion a year, to foster business, support business. And we're at cross purposes with that. CJ's won't be employing those college kids, it will not be buying food, drink from the local vendors in the community, and those dollars then, of course, won't be circulating. You've had economics, I'm sure, so you know all about that. Again, I deeply regret that I couldn't convince you, but hopefully, again, in the future, we'll do all we can to keep businesses welcoming and viable in this community. Secondly, Mr. City Manager, I know it's in the budget, there's $130,000. Now, is that your department or salary or what?
Could you please address the commission first and then we'll, if we need staff, then we'll do staff, so if you would just, this is a city commission meeting.
Yes.
The electeds. The electeds. So, if you just direct your questions to us and if we don't know the answer...
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, 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 okay, again, I apologize, I'm kind of new at this.
I understand.
Okay, in the budget, $130,000, City Manager? Is that correct?
The budget and frame?
We don't know.
I don't, well, I mean, I don't know, does it say, are you asking, does he make $130,000?
I'm asking, is that a department allocation or is that...
On the budget, it's a department allocation.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Okay.
Because the actual budget for the personnel in the manager's office is higher than that. I'm not sure we're getting $130,000.
Oh, I...
But, that's for three people.
Okay, I previewed the budget and I had $130,000. I just wanted to know if I was in...
258 for three people.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, do you remember that I was here on May 22nd? I asked you about that contract with allied?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I didn't get an answer, so...
Well, I'm not, I'm not certain that I remember the question. I do remember you being here to answer it, but I would tell you that staff brought me forth to the city commission...
Yeah.
Prior to that, the discussion as to whether the city commission, whether would have an interest in them going forward, because we have a contract with them now, to extending the, basically extending the existing contract...
Okay.
With them. And we gave staff permission to move forward to do that.
Again, Mr. Mayor, all I know is what I read in the paper about overwhelming support.
And we all, I don't, but it wouldn't surprise me that we all voted for it.
Yeah, okay, okay. I think I related to you that I go out and pick up papers and I brought my British Cisco Kid here, which probably is not a...
And again, I would say that doesn't surprise me. Last night, it was a very windy night and the garbage was out on my street...
Yeah.
And I can tell you, before the garbage was picked up this morning, one of my neighbors had had a full container and then a black bag on top of that.
I've been there, yeah.
That black bag was nowhere to be seen. I'm sure it rolled down the, down the street somewhere. So, it doesn't surprise me. I can also tell you that there have been times when the garbage truck has picked the garbage up, put it in, as it goes up to put it down, the garbage is spewed out.
Exactly.
It's not a perfect system.
Absolutely. I agree, yeah, okay. On the other hand, if you try to deal with those people, you know, as a customer, you know, it's far less than satisfactory, okay? So, so much, and that's, that's all I want to say about that, okay?
I would make a suggestion to you, Mr. Jennings. If you deal with them directly and you're not satisfied, call your city commissioner.
Well, I did do that and I was told that the city no longer has, I don't want to quote, but, you know, that the recycling was no longer a city's responsibility and...
Well, the recycling is not.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And...
The garbage pickup is.
Okay.
Okay, the recycling program, which, again, was a budget cut item from a couple of years ago, is on, for lack of a better term, a volunteer basis for those citizens that want to work with recycling and are willing to pay for the service.
And I do that, yeah.
Okay, and I do all...
And I appreciate having that service available. One last thing here. In my walks on there and picking up trash, do we pay someone to do that or, I mean, we sweep the beach and all, but I mean, do we, we don't have any sweep street?
We don't really have garbage police that are out there. We do, we do pick up the garbage, we have garbage containers out there and we have park rangers that pick those up. We'd like to think that most people would be courteous enough to put their stuff in. We realize this is not a perfect world and many, many don't.
That's for sure.
And we also find that quite true on the Dog Beach.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wieringo?
I also pick up trash when I'm out walking. However, I am amazed at how clean it is when you think of the number of people who, I'm right on the beach, who use the beach and the surrounding area. I just think it's amazing how clean it is.
Exactly. I agree. A lot of people are out there picking up trash.
But, it doesn't...
Community interest and dedication.
Look for our waste lines.
Okay, I have one last question.
Please, please, your time is...
Yes, I know.
Okay.
I asked for eight minutes.
Well, and I'm giving you, already giving you more, where it's normally three minutes, you're welcome to come back at the next meeting.
I know.
Finish.
I come back the next meeting?
You're welcome, you come every single evening. Go ahead, finish your...
Okay. Well, in my walk, I noticed out on the pier, one of the life rings, personal flotation devices was out on the pier and probably 30 miles per wind, I'm still windburnt from it. There's a warning or informational piece on the cover that says, you know, you're being monitored or, you know, whatever here. If that ring were out there, could have been in the water, it wasn't, but it could have been. If that door opened and the thing is swinging, it shouldn't have been alarmed someplace or is that...
Again, that's not, that's not a city in Muskegon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, well, again, when you're...
Okay, well, that answers that. Again, I thank you for your time and especially commend Lawrence there, Mr. Lawrence, for the transportation issue here. You know, it costs a million dollars for cruise missile, it costs a million dollars for one soldier in Afghanistan per year.
Well, we got to get out of there.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission?
Hello, Joshua Elden Brady, 1336 Spring Street, Precinct 6. I have just a comment of concern and a couple of questions. One of the consent items tonight, I first became aware of a couple of weeks ago, that our polling location in Precinct 6 is being moved to City Hall. And I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. Precinct 6 is comprised of parts of McLaughlin and Angel neighborhood. I know the census map or census block in McLaughlin, over 15% of the low-income households have no cars. In Angel, it's over 20%. So, we have a significant number of people in our precinct who don't have reliable transportation and I'm very much concerned as we come up to Election Day in August and then again in November, that we're going to have a lot of people who want to participate, who are committed to participate, who can't get there. I know I live near Wood Street, about halfway across the precinct from City Hall, and even as a pretty much able-bodied, younger adult, it's a hike for me. I can't imagine what it's like for those individuals who live over on Getty Street who may be, who are senior citizens or who are disabled, who don't have transportation. With that being said, I understand if there isn't a location in the precinct that we could vote, there isn't a location. My request would be to everybody who's here, if you have resources, if you're part of a group in the community that can provide transportation to the polls for those who can't get there because it's further away this year, and I'm sure that's not just in Precinct 6, I'm sure that applies to other precincts, I haven't looked at the whole map, utilize those resources, help people get there. My request to the city, to the commission and to staff is that we not just let this sit as an issue that we're going to vote at City Hall forever because we are this year, that in future years, we go back every year and we look, is there a new facility that's closer, that we can move people back to be closer? Because it's not right to be having to leave our precinct, to go outside of our precinct to vote if there's a facility there that we can vote. So, we need to keep our eyes open for that. And my third request would be that the city commission look at, is there anything the city has done in policy and how we add, how we allocate the grant funding and how we have local zoning set up and how we have business organizations set up that is discouraging organizations that might have, nonprofit organizations, service organizations, that might have places that we could vote from locating in the precincts where we don't have them? Is there a way that we can actively do something, that the city can actively do something to try to change that situation so that we don't have to leave our precinct to vote? Thank you.
I would, I'm tempted to answer a couple of those questions. First of all, I would tell you that the city clerk's office worked diligently in every one of the areas where we were losing a polling place. It wasn't the city that was deciding to do it, it was other issues that brought those to there, to bear. So, will we, please allow me to finish. Will we do that? We will, but I would also call on you as a citizen and other citizens, if you are aware of buildings that could perhaps be viable and the people are willing to allow voters to come in, that's another issue that's there, please let the clerk's office know and we'll certainly take a look at that. Number two is, as far as distance and riding, I would tell you that traditionally, over the last, I would say, four or five years, that radio station 103.7, The Beat, has traditionally had people that if you would give a phone call, if you listen to that, that radio station on, on Election Day, that they have people that will come and pick you up and give you rides to precincts, in particular, that I've noticed, listening to that station in the city of Muskegon Heights and in the city of Muskegon. So, you might want to let, within your neighborhood association, let them know that on that particular day, if they listen to 103.7, The Beat, that they will be able to probably get phone numbers. I don't want to speak for them for this election year, for the primary, but traditionally, both during the primary and the general election, they have, because they want to see people get out and vote, they've had folks that will drive, pick people up and take them to the polling place.
And I am aware that most of those changes are due to changes in the school district and outside of cities control and certainly if I become aware of some place, unfortunately I'm not at present, I will be back with that information to the city.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to address the commission? Commissioner Spataro?
I would move that we go into closed session to discuss pending litigation.
And attorney-client communication?
And attorney-client, client communication.
You have the support?
Say again?
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Wieringo, to go into closed session for attorney-client communication and pending litigation.
Worth a five-minute, got to get rid of the...
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same, thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. We are listening. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.